I have six o'clock straight up and I will call the June 28th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Viviana, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Debbie Moore?
Present.
Patrick Connell?
Here.
Cynthia Meyer?
Here.
Sue Anne Fugey?
Present.
Richard Gartman?
Here.
Matt Lassen?
Present.
Cheryl Lee?
Present.
Diana Rose, who called in and she is ill tonight and will not be here. Item number two, citizen comments. Comments will be heard from the audience on any topic not listed on the agenda, not to exceed three minutes in length. To address the commission, please submit a fully completed request card to the commission secretary prior to the beginning of the meeting. They're over on the table back here by the door. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, if a citizen discusses any item not on the agenda, the commission cannot discuss issues raised or make any decision at this time. Issues may be referred to city staff for research and possible future action. To address the commission concerning any item on the agenda, please submit the card to the secretary prior to consideration of that issue, of that item. Do we have any citizen comments? Thank you. Does anyone here not filled out a form but wants to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to item three, items for individual consideration. Item 3A, consider action to approve meeting minutes from May 31, 2018, Planning and Zoning Commission, regular meeting. We've been distributed to us, have you had a chance to read it? Are there any corrections, amendments?
Motion to approve as is.
Second. Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes unanimously. Item 3B, public hearing and consider action to approve the ordinance for an amendment to the signs ordinance, Article 3.20 of the City of Bastrop Code of Ordinances to allow digital signs on pole or pylon signs and including size and placement restrictions, then forward to the next city council meeting. Ms. Jennifer.
Good evening. So, this item that's on the agenda tonight is, staff has been asked to put together some amendments that would allow additions of electronic messaging to existing signs through town for various reasons, and this was specifically regarding pylon signs, the new existing signs or legal nonconforming signs. So, it would apply to new signs that are going up or signs that are already in existence that may not conform to our current code.
Yeah, they are nonconforming because they were up before.
Yes, and I'll go over that in the presentation, but there are several individuals across town have asked to upgrade signs that aren't strictly meeting the current code. People have tended to use those kind of messaging, you know, where you stick the letters up. Those don't tend to age well, and so the request has been to go to electronic messaging on some of those signs. So, just kind of some background, so everyone knows what kind of signs we're talking about. A pylon sign is, it's a sign that's typically, it's wider at the top than it is the bottom. Usually you see them on a pole around here. Sometimes you'll see, this is the example out of our code, where it's actually got a bigger base, but it's still narrower than the sign face. These are only allowed on Highway 71 and only allowed for sites that have buildings greater than 12,000 square feet. They can be up to 35 feet in height and the actual sign face can be up to 160 square feet and the sign structure can be 80 square feet. Our other type of sign that you see around is the monument sign. And a monument sign has a base that's continuous on the bottom that's wider than the actual sign face. The size of your sign face and height depend on how big your building is and what speed of the street you are on. So, the faster the street and the bigger the building, the larger the monument sign. The maximum size you can get, actually, I said 160 square feet, but I'm looking at the picture now, it says 96 square feet. I think I was reading a different section of the code. It's 96 square feet for roads of 50 miles per hour or higher.
Can you give us some examples of both the pylon and the monument sign that are here now that are people that may want to visualize what we're talking about?
Most of the signs along 71 are pylon signs. The Bucky's sign is one that does not meet our current height requirements. It was granted a variance to go 70 feet tall, but it's a, it's typical example of a pylon sign. It's got the pole and it's got the large sign face at the top. A lot of the other signs that you see that stick up over the top of the freeway are pylon signs. Monument signs are the ones you'll see more downtown. The convention center sign is a digital monument sign. So, those are kind of your, these max out at 16 feet in height for the total structure. So, if you drive around town, you'll see a lot of these for most businesses. And then electronic messaging is part of the sign code that was, and this was amended in 2011, to be allowed on monument signs and on fuel pricing signs. They can only, the digital portion can only occupy up to 25 percent of the total sign face or sign faces of the sign. There are limits, the image message cannot be moving, so it can't be a scrolling or flashing sign. It has to contain a complete message, so you can't say, "Oil change," you know, it can't change, it has to say, "Oil change 1999" in one complete message. And the change cannot happen more than once every eight seconds under the current code. There are also sign illumination standards that will limit the brightness and include auto dimming and auto shut-off features in the case that the sign malfunctions. Part of the issue that's kind of come up is that this section has not always been consistently enforced or interpreted on what the difference between a pylon and a monument sign was by past staff. So, there are signs in town that have electronic messaging on pylon signs and in varying percentages. And I will say, our sign code, it tends to be rather confusing, some of you that have read through it for this meeting, and it is one of the high priority items on our list to address over the next year to 18 months. A legal nonconforming sign is a sign that was either permitted under a prior code or was not under city regulation at the time of installation. So, signs that were annexed into the city limits, they were already there at the time, or signs that were prior, the majority of this code was adopted in 2006, so signs that were in existence prior to 2006 would fall under the legal nonconforming section. Those signs can continue to exist in their current configuration, they can change the sign face itself, but they cannot, if they have to do repairs or maintenance that is greater than 60 percent of the cost of a new sign of the same type at the same location, they have to come into compliance with the current regulations. So, total destruction of the sign would require that the new sign in that place would have to come into compliance with our new sign code or current sign code. So, what we are recommending tonight is to add electronic messaging to new pylon signs, allow new pylon signs, or existing permitted signs that currently comply with our regulations to add electronic messaging and to allow legal nonconforming pylon signs to upgrade some portion of their sign to electronic messaging. So, for a new or existing sign, we're recommending to stay with the 25 percent of the total sign face areas can be electronic, and I have some pictures in a second that will show this. For the legal nonconforming that are greater than 160 square feet, which is our maximum pylon sign face size right now, if they're currently greater than 160 square feet, they can put up to 40 square feet of the existing area can be converted into electronic message or part of that primary sign area can be removed and added, add that 40 square feet as a separate sign face. So, sometimes people will have the electronic part separate from the main sign. For a legal nonconforming sign of 160 square feet or less, they could upgrade up to 30 percent of the existing sign face area up to that 40 square feet. And that kind of deviation is allowed, some of those signs are a lot more irregularly constructed than a new sign would be today, so that gives them a little bit more flexibility on trying to change out to digital messaging. So, some pictures, because we're all more visual than we are verbal. So, for a new pylon sign that would come in, they could have, the total sign face could be up to 160 square feet, and so 25 percent of that would be allowed to be electronic messaging. So, you could have it either incorporated as part of the complete sign or as a separate sign cabinet on the pole. For a 160 square foot or less sign, you could have up to 30 percent or up to 40 square feet if it was the maximum on the existing sign face or added to the pole. And for a sign over the 160 square feet allowance, in this example, the main sign is 300 square feet and they have a 40 square foot digital, or they would have to incorporate that in their main sign. If the original sign was 340 square feet, they still would only have that 40 square foot digital. So, the next steps is to forward your recommendation and comments on to the city council for their consideration and public hearing and first reading at their next meeting. So, ready and willing to hear your feedback.
You've gotten a lot of requests for this?
We've had a couple. One very vocal person, but yes, so.
Did you say one very local or vocal?
Vocal. And making points of that, you know, some of the older, older marquee kind of type signs are, may not be preferable, the digital signs may actually look cleaner and be more efficient than those kind of older lighted cabinet.
Right. So, I'm going to start by saying that while this is worth a discussion, my opinion is that this should be kicked down the road slightly to when we start talking about digital billboards again. And it should be part of one of the same conversation, because I can already tell you that the biggest concern about the digital billboards and stuff like this is what is it going to look like at night? And I feel like talking about this in its own little space and then digital billboards separately are not going to really jive. And so, if we're going to talk about digital billboards and putting in limitations on how they look at night and stuff like that, that those same limitations would apply to these types of signs, so we're not getting, you know, we're not driving down 71 and we're flashing, instead of flashy billboards, it's red messages everywhere, you know, as we scroll. So, my opinion is that we have a discussion about this, but, you know, that we kind of move it down the road a little bit until we pick up digital billboards again.
Well, it also seems that if a comprehensive sign reform is coming in the next 12 to 18 months, that it's probably best addressed with the rest of the code as well, just so we can not consider it in isolation, but consider it as an overall plan. And then, you know, like our issues with the billboards are just, do we want lit signs at night on our highway? And this is, you know, 25 percent of that, but, you know, still, it's 25 percent of that, and it kind of, I guess we just got to have an overall idea of how we want to light that side of that highway or if we're going to light that highway. But really, one other question, actually. When you're talking about, because this will probably come up, when you're talking about the actual, like, nonconforming signs that have to be larger than the 160 square feet, if they convert 25 percent of that to digital, the total still has to be the same they had before? Like, say they had 200 square feet, so now they can add the 40 square feet or whatever that smaller number is. They can't have 240 square feet.
No, it would have to be 200.
So, they'd have to build the digital and redo their sign to be smaller in order to incorporate that. Okay. But yeah, I think that kicking it down the road sounds like a good idea.
And I will say, we do have, there already is, are provisions in the code for digital signs. We do allow them in other circumstances already in town, so those provisions for the brightness and the flashing and all that are already there. So, we would just be continuing that in these instances. And we do allow lighted signs backlit through the sign, you know, just your typical lighted cabinet signs on pylon signs as well.
So, my understanding that we currently have an ordinance that allows some variation of this, but we have one person who's very vocal who does not like the way it applies to them, and they would like to see it changed.
And it has been applied inconsistently in the past, so.
So, my opinion would be the failure to inconsistently apply it in the past is not a good reason in any way, shape, or form to change the whole code moving forward. It would appear that more consistent enforcement going forward would be ideal until, like Matt said, we get a chance to rewrite everything and do it. If we had 20 property owners that were kind of banded together and said, "Hey, we'd really like to see this," that's one thing. If we have one person who's very vocal, sorry, that's ideally not what's going to be what's best for everybody, just what's best for you. So, my opinion only.
Any other comments? This is a public hearing, do we have any citizen who wishes to be heard on this matter?
I have a secret.
Okay. Hearing none, I will, if commission members have no other comments, I will close the public hearing and I will consider a motion.
The motion to recommend a city council that we delay any action on this item until we pick up digital billboards again.
Second. Motion and multiple seconds. Vivian, would you call the roll, please?
Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Patrick Connell?
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer?
Yes.
Sue Anne Fugey?
Yes.
Richard Gartman?
Yes.
Matt Lassen?
Yes.
Cheryl Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, members. Kicking it down the road has been approved. Item 3C, consider action to recommend approval of the Pecan Park Section 1A preliminary plat being 13.994 acres out of the Mosia Russo survey, abstract 56, located east of a future extension of Sterling Drive within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, and forward to the next city council meeting. Ms. Bill.
So, just a reminder, since we have people in the audience and online, we are talking about the City of Bastrop subdivision development process. In that process, it starts with your zoning district, which determines your lot sizes and setbacks, and then we go on to preliminary plat, which is the stage we're at right now. And then after that, the developer still has to turn in construction plans that detail how all the public improvements will be constructed, and then after that, the final plat can be approved by council and then ultimately filed, recorded to the county once the public improvements are in. So, right now, we're at the preliminary plat stage for this subdivision. And I say final plat on my side because I was not, I was going too fast. So, still preliminary plat, but this all still applies. It's required by the Bastrop subdivision ordinance and Texas Local Government Code. Plats that meet the ordinance and the local government code must be approved, and once they're approved, the construction plans have been approved, then that's when they can start construction of the infrastructure. So, the area we're talking about right now is Pecan Park Section 1A, which is over here in the top, in the northwest corner of the residential section of Pecan Park. The commercial section is right here to the north, and that's what the, their road will be connecting. This is actually the section that will provide the second main way in and out for the entire section that is west of Childers Drive. So, currently, you can see the lots that have already been platted for the previous sections, and we also have, the remainder of Section 3 is on the same agenda for the next item. You can see the lot layout here, they'll have Sterling Drive will connect into the Pecan Park Commercial section to the north and then connect back to Section 3 through Driftwood Drive.
If I may ask something quickly?
Sure.
So, Section 3C and 3D, they're both preliminary plats for Pecan Park?
Mm-hmm.
Can they be considered together, or do we have to separate them on the?
I can do one presentation and you can consider them both separately if you would like to do that.
Yeah.
I can go through both presentations, because they're largely the same information. So, Pecan is.
But we have to do it as it's presented on the agenda.
Yeah, but they still need to be two separate motions.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, for this section, it's a little under 14 acres, it's undeveloped, the zoning is the Pecan Park Plan Development Residential section. The lot standard for this particular section is the patio homes product type, and they're underlying with future land uses neighborhood residential. So, for this section, I really sorry to change the slide, it's patio homes is the 40 by 115 and a total of 4,600 square feet in size. So, this is the smaller product type in the subdivision that they've already done in, I think, Section 4, 2. I get all the numbers confused, but that product type is already out in Pecan Park. By comparison, this is smaller than our current single-family standard in the code of 7,000 square feet. The next steps after you approve the preliminary plat is the city council approval, it's July 10th meeting. They've already turned in the construction plans for review. Once those are complete, then the final plat will be placed on the city council agenda, and they can begin building public infrastructure in order to record the final plat and then ultimately issue the building permits. You want to take action on this one?
I just wanted to say for the folks watching from home or anyone that might be here and might be confused as to why we keep hearing, "Pecan Park, Pecan Park, Pecan Park." It's because Pecan Park is a big development. Some sections are commercial, some are larger lots, some are smaller lots, so that's why until it's built out, they will continue to come back periodically. So, it's not, we're not crazy, it's really a process, and that's what we're doing. So, do any commission members have any questions on this?
Just as always when we do these, just as a reminder and confirmation, they have met every call requirements for the ordinance. This is a ministerial process, and we have no authority to deny this as long as they've met all the requirements.
Yes.
And they've met those requirements, correct?
They've met the requirements, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone wishes to be heard on this?
Just in addition to that, as part of that, but, so this is a planned development, and they're in compliance with all the agreements of the planned development as well, as far as lot sizes.
Yes, and lot percentages, yeah, of what they can have, and what, this is following their original concept plan that was part of the planned development zoning.
You said it better than I did, so.
And the drainage and all this is being considered?
Yeah. The drainage will go through, and for this particular section, will go through the future section, the rest of Section 1 and Section, I think, 2 to the south, and it will convey directly to the Colorado River.
And it comports with the comprehensive plan?
Yes, this area is neighborhood residential, which plans for a mix of different types of products, housing product types, which Pecan Park is meeting.
On the Sterling Street that it's going to butt into at the end, do we know what the timeline is as to when that street will be completed?
For the commercial section?
Yeah.
They have the, so the preliminary plat for the commercial section was approved several years ago, and they've been, they've recorded other final plats within that section. So, the final plat for, it's actually on the upcoming city council agenda, that will contain that portion of Sterling Drive and connect back to Agnes Street, so that'll be their connection in and out, because they do have a certain number of homes they can build before they need that connection to have, for safe ingress and egress. So, that should be within the year.
Anything else?
I have a.
We have no question, no one wants to be heard on this, right? Okay.
No questions.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve as is.
They're second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need some chocolate. Okay. Okay. All right. Then we move on to Section 3D, consider action to recommend approval, Pecan Park Section 3B, 3C, 3D, and 3E, preliminary plat being 28.675 acres out of the Mosia Russo survey, abstract 56, located north of the extension of Childers Drive within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, and forward to the next city council meeting.
So, similarly, we are also at the preliminary plat stage for this, and where we're looking now is over here to the east of Pecan Park 1A, and this connects back into Section 6B that is almost completed right now over here, and they'll start building homes soon in 6B. So, Childers Drive comes in here, and that's where we're connecting, they're continuing the extension of Childers Drive with these three sections, more, well, four sections. We kind of lumped them together. So, you can see, this is a larger phase in this preliminary plat. You've got Phase B, C, D, and E, and the developers tend to phase the development in these ways so they can respond to the market demand and not get too far out of what the market can actually absorb on new homes.
How many homes are planted here?
In this one, this section will be 114 in this section. It's a little under 29 acres, and this is in the single-family select and single-family product types in this neighborhood. So, these are the larger home types in Pecan Park. There are 16 that are the 60 by 120, and then 98 that are the 50 by 120. So, one's a little larger and the other one's a slight bit smaller than our standard SF7 residential zoning district. This one actually, they are moving quickly enough that they've already turned in the construction plans. They've already been reviewed and preliminarily approved by our city engineer. So, the preliminary plat for this section and the final plats for Sections 3B and 3C will all be on the July 10th agenda, because they are moving that quickly out in Pecan Park right now. And so, once the preliminary gets approved and then 3B and 3C get approved, they'll be able to get started on building the public infrastructure for those first two sections of the four phases in this preliminary plat. Any questions?
At some point, is Childers and Sterling going to meet?
Yes. So, it doesn't show it. Well, I think eventually they'll meet over here. Right now, you're going to have, Childers will connect up through Trailside, which will connect back through Section 1A. So, you can kind of see it, it'll come through here and connect to Pecan Park 1A. So, you'll have, I'll actually have to look at the concept plan, Sterling Drive will continue down on this side in future sections, but not in these sections currently.
Okay. And two, you want to ask your normal question?
Does this meet all the requirements?
This does, yes.
And we have no authority to deny it?
Yes.
All right, just making sure.
All right. Any other commission members want to ask a question? Viviana, this is a public hearing, does anyone wish to be heard?
None at this time, ma'am.
None at this time. We will close the public hearing and we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as is.
They're a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. At this time, we will close the regular meeting and we will convene back into a workshop session to have discussion with future developers for the northeast corner of State Highway 95 and Chestnut Street for the rezoning of the existing commercial mixed use and commercial to zoning into one commercial district.
So, this item had been on your agenda at the last meeting as a public hearing request for rezoning at the corner of 95 and Chestnut, to rezone that corner. It's right now split tract between CMU in the Form Based Code, which is commercial mixed use, and C2, commercial 2, heavy, it's heavy commercial in our standard zoning code. The applicant is looking at developing almost the entire block, save this little sliver where there's a house, and to do that, they need to have one zoning district for the entire tract. They will, these five lots will be eventually platted into one tract to be developed. So, looking at the zoning districts at the time, they had requested C1 local commercial, or commercial 1, which is our lighter commercial district in our regular code. So, it would have taken CMU out of, taken the CMU part out of the Form Based Code and taken it back to our standard zoning code and made the entire tract C1, which is actually a less intensive zoning district than the C2 on the other half. This got forwarded to the last city council meeting, and they recommended to send it back to P&amp;Z as a workshop to work out with the applicant, what is the vision for going on this corner. One of the things I will kind of impress that CMU, C2, and our C1 districts, they all do allow, for land uses, they all allow a fuel cells use in any of those districts. What it kind of comes down to is the look and feel of that corner. CMU has some additional requirements, I do have to admit, it's a pretty new I do have to admit, it's a pretty new code. We haven't had a lot come in under it. So when we really started dissecting the district, there's actually a lot of, in that corridor that defaults back to our regular zoning code. So there are some standards that, that are, um, tie back to the Form-Based Code, but a lot of them actually tie back to the standard zoning code as this corner was intended to be more auto-oriented than pedestrian-oriented, um, as the rest of downtown is. So I would like to give the developer a chance to kind of go over what their product looks like so you can see what they're proposing to put at this corner first and then we can go over some questions.
If you would, just give us a brief overview of what Form-Based Codes would require as for a situation of the, the buildings and parking lot versus C2, if you would.
So, well, I'll just go into this. So we, we included information on three different districts to kind of give an idea of what the differences are. So these are the intent statements for the three districts. The, the, the commercial mixed use is, uh, was to provide small to mid-scale commercial retail restaurants office with appropriate transitions to the auto-oriented corridors of 71 and 95. That, so the CMU pretty much, um, in the Form-Based Code is all along the frontage of 71 and then along the frontage of 95 to provide, because those are obviously your more auto-oriented corridors.
Just for clarification, auto-oriented means cars, lots of cars travel there?
Lots of cars, lots of cars, less, less walking, more cars.
Okay. Not like AutoZone in a car dealership?
No, 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 yeah. Auto, auto, yeah, car-oriented, people are getting there via car, less people walking from their house over to those uses. Uh, C1 is predominantly a hea, uh, I think we might have gotten these backwards. No, that's actually, C1, our, this is part of why our zoning code needs to be updated is some of these statements do not probably reflect as well as they should. It's predominantly heavy retail and light intensity wholesale and commercial uses of a service nature. So C1 is intended to kind of be more of your, your stores and those kind of commercial uses, um, that typically have operating characteristics and traffic service requirements compatible with office, retail shopping and some, some residential environment. So you'll see the C1 adjacent to, uh, residential more often than you'll see C2. C2 is to provide central and convenient locations for small-scale service and commercial-related establishments, wholesale products, welding shops, flea markets, major automotive repair, upholstery shops, and other heavy commercial uses. So these are your, your Walmarts, your AutoZones, your, the, your car, um, discount tires, all of those uses. Some, some comparisons of the setbacks, this is kind of where you get into the, the main differences between these two sections. CMU require, allows a minimum 10-foot front, front side and rear setback and, uh, has no maximum setback. So in a lot of parts of our Form-Based Code, there's minimums and maximum setbacks. You can't be any closer than 10 feet, but you can't be any further away than, than 25 feet. In the CMU, they do not have that requirement, so they could set their building 35, 40 feet back from the road. There is no requirement to pull that up to the setback in the CMU district. Um, in C1 and C2, you are required to have your building at least 25 feet away from the property line. Some comparisons of the C1 and C2 district, um, this is literally how we call gas stations. Food and beverage sales stores with gasoline, this is a, a gas station, are both allowed in our C1 and our C2 districts. Some of the other, um, uses, you can see that they're the same between the two, um, drugstores, your department stores, furniture stores, all those kind of things. Bigger, your bigger uses start to need CUPs or are not allowed in your C1. In the commercial mixed use district, um, the auto-related sales establishments and retail or sales services with drive-through, which includes retail with associated fuel sales and alcohol sales. So both of these uses are allowed in the commercial mixed use district. Um, one of the other big, um, comparisons between the two codes is, um, building materials. So in the commercial mixed use, um, they are required that their primary entrance has to be oriented towards the sidewalk, so it actually has to have a clear definitive path from their front door to the public sidewalk and, uh, the building facades-
David, can you, can you define path, like a actual path, like, like board path, like a sidewalk or?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they actually have to connect back to the sidewalk. So it has, or an ADA has to, someone has to be able to get from that, um, sidewalk to the front door without having to walk around the side of the building, which you have in your other commercial zones. A lot of times their front doors will be oriented towards the parking lot, not the front of the property.
So would it be fair to say that a store with a door leading out to where you have pumps in front of you where you could walk through the pumps would meet that standard? You're not going to have to walk around it?
Potentially.
Okay.
But I'll let the developer go over his, uh, thoughts for the site here.
I'm just, I'm just making sure that that's-
Yeah. Also, building facades must be designed with a distinct base, middle, and top. So basically some articulation to, to provide, um, an interesting facade, not just a plain face, you know, uh, that you see in some commercial buildings. Um, exterior building material requirement, um, a lot of the Form-Based Code actually only calls out those specific changes if you are on a primary or secondary street, which are specifically coded throughout the zoning map. And I don't think we even got back that far, um, on this map. Actually, it just doesn't show it. Are any, uh, we have a secondary frontage that ends, I think about here, but there are no special frontages, frontages in this area. Everything defaults back to a general frontage, which within the general frontage defaults back to our standard zoning code and standards for what's, what's required. So in this case, it would require masonry materials on the front. Um, and in this case, it's got a lot of fronts because there's four sides. So, um, they would be required to use masonry materials for their facade. The other major difference between the two districts is signage. In the Form-Based Code, you're limited to one wall sign with 100 square feet of area. You can have, uh, one monument sign per street frontage, up to two, uh, that are a max of 50 square feet area and six feet tall, and a building blade sign of 30 square feet. In your C1 and C2 districts, um, the monument size, monument sign is dependent upon the building size and the speed of the road. And actually, we wrote this assuming it was, um, under 5,000 square feet. It's actually a little over 5,000 square feet, so there, I think they'd get a 60-square-foot sign and not a 48. But that's, so a little bit bigger than the, the Form-Based Code. Uh, one per street frontage, they could have theoretically four because they'll have four street frontages. And the building blade signs, um, are 16 square feet and their wall signage is based on the linear building frontage.
That's one per street, but is that one, is it, okay, so one per street, so four on the property period?
Mm-hmm.
Or one per street? So they have four, but two of them are residential, so does that mean they could have four monument signs, two on, on Chestnut, two 195?
No, it would be one per street.
One per, okay.
Yeah.
Making sure.
So probably not any reason to have a sign back in the residential neighborhood.
I'm, I'm just making sure that it's not, each street gives you one, but we're going to move them over to the front.
No, no, it's one per street frontage.
And a building blade is what?
Uh, building blade is 16 square feet. So it's actually-
And what is a building blade?
Uh, what is a building blade? Our code defines it in two different ways. There are the, the hanging signs under, um, awnings, but it's also the blade signs that can attach to the side of, um, a building that's, that project out.
Aye.
And none of these zoning districts in this location will allow a pylon sign. Uh, one of the things in the CMU district, they are required to provide a three-foot street screen along frontages that have surface parking in the build two, at the build-two zone. So within that, I think it's a 25-foot area, if they put any kind of parking, which they're allowed to have parking up to three feet, uh, behind the property line on sides of the road frontage. So in this case, all, all four sides would be allowed to have parking up to three feet of the property line, but they'll have to have a three-foot screening, um, street screening along those, uh, streets.
Can you define scre, street screen?
Didn't say it. She didn't tell me to find it.
Street screen?
It's either a wall or a solid hedge, a vegetative hedge. And then, um, the, one of the other major considerations for C1 and C2 is there's a maximum, uh, building lot coverage of 50% in C1 and 65%. And that's how much of the, the area of the site can be covered with, um, of the actual building footprint. And that, that, there is no limit in the CMU.
Not impervious coverage, but just building?
Building footprint, yeah. And that's all I have on that and I'll let, um, David kind of give you some information on the site. You can ask him specific questions and then if we have more zoning questions, I'll can go.
Can I ask you just a question, Jennifer?
Sure.
It was on the setback requirements on CMU. There are no setback requirements on a CMU?
10 feet.
10 feet?
Mm-hmm.
And the difference on that versus C1 or 2?
25 feet. So in, so in C1 and C2, they must be set back, um, at least 25 feet. In, uh, C, uh, CMU, 10 feet is the minimum, but there's no maximum. And that compares to the rest of the Form-Based Code. Most of the Form-Based Code, there's actually minimums and maximums.
So a building that would go in-
Mm-hmm.
-could be a lot closer to the highway than the people in the residential area if it was CMU?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Oh, hang on.
Well, I think, so, cause I'm just trying to gather this. So the CMU seems to be less restrictive on setbacks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, most of the Form-Based Code is actually less restrictive on setbacks to encourage people to pull, pull the buildings up to, uh, the street frontage.
And so, and I'll be excited to see what the site plan looks like, but last month, we talked about how the CMU zoning was kind of inconvenient because of where the building was placed. What I'm hearing is that put a 10-foot buffer around it, you could put that building wherever you want on any of those properties. So one of the arguments that we had last month for changing the zoning because I couldn't, I can't move my building or I can't put it where, where I wanted, the pumps and everything, doesn't seem to be accurate now that we dive down into CMU because I could put up a building all the way back in the corner, or I could put it all the way up the front, or I could, you know, move it around or whatever you want to do with it. So just my-
Yes, that's, and then part of that is, um, that the reading of the code, it's, I, it is new. We've had several requests just in the last month for this, um, stretch to look at commercial buildings, so we really had to dissect the Form-Based Code and figure it out.
Okay.
There was an assumption that these were primary and secondary roads because it was such a major intersection, but the Form-Based Code did not, um, code them that way.
Okay.
On that point, the opposite is true though. For the CMU, they would, they could come closer to the highway instead of the residence, but the C1 or 2, they would be closer to the residence. So that would be the, we're, Patrick was talking about how far back they could go. I'm talking about how far they can get to the street, to the residence.
They have no latitude.
Yeah.
So if they wanted to be good neighbors and pulled away from the neighborhood as far as they possibly could, the building, then-
And I think the concern-
CMU would be a much better zoning.
Yes, but I think the concern with some of that was that if you pull the building up to the property line and, uh, along Chestnut and 95, you're going to push the pumps into everyone's front yard because it is a gas station. So, so you, so the question is, do you want building further, closer to the residential or gas pumps? Which is the, the more, and they, and we can see what, what the layout looks like today.
Okay, why don't we let the, the developer make his presentation? We do have one person that like, would like to be heard. We'll, we'll do this after we, uh, we hear from the developer.
Hi, Commissioner. Great to see you again.
Give us your name again, please.
Sure. David Meyer with QuickTrip.
And you're with?
Uh, QuickTrip Corporation.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, we've met with Jennifer. Uh, after we met with, with the commission, we went to city council. Uh, we asked for the recommendation to rezone from the CMU C2 to the leftenant C1. Um, city council actually recommended us come back for the workshop, so that's how we're here today. So after that, we went internally, met with QuickTrip, and we tried to figure out, okay, what can we do with the site? So we looked at the C2 zoning. We can fit in the C2 zoning, however, what we envisioned for the property is to fit on all five property, or all five of the properties and have one continuous zoning. So with that, we, uh, we looked at C2, C1 obviously was not recommended. We looked at CMU, can we comply? So as we're going through the, uh, through the codes, I was kind of confused on how it was worded, so we met with, uh, Jennifer to kind of have a mini workshop before we met with you all. Uh, and actually, good news, uh, we found out that through CMU, we can actually, uh, we can meet all the requirements of the code. And so I'm actually here to ask the recommendation of withdrawing our request from C1 on the C2 portion to a continuous CMU rezone for all five properties.
Members, do you have any questions?
So I'm just gonna, for the record, point out that, uh, last month, my biggest concern with rezoning this corner was that we would set a precedence for the future other corner. So, um, the fact that you want to continue and expand the, uh, Form-Based Code, um, on that corner is fantastic and that's, that's all I got to say. But I think that was probably your biggest objection, not what you want to put there or how you want to design it, but simply the, the rezone of that and setting it, you know, so the, the catty corner one, five years from now, doesn't get demolished and somebody wants to put in something and then we end up in a situation where they're trying to, you know, do something with. So I, I think that's exactly what needed to happen and so I, I don't think else.
Cool. Thank you.
Sure. Did you have any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We do have one person who would like to be heard. This is a workshop, but we do encourage citizen comments. Ms. Carol Reynolds? And you're at 1712 Farm Street, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So I, I've been following this because we happen to have a item on the past two agendas at the same time and I live not right around this development, but just a street over in that same corner in between 95 and 21. So when we were talking about this though at the June 12th meeting, I thought part of it was that this workshop, or the reason it was being sent back to workshop was to include comments from the neighbors, to at least get some input and give them an opportunity to speak. And I just want to make sure that y'all know that we weren't notified of when this meeting was going to be. I understand that the zoning and everything, all that may be said and done and there may be nothing that anybody can say or do about what the developer chooses to do with the property.
If I could interrupt you for just a moment, notices were sent out?
To whom?
To-
Not for the workshop, for the original-
For the, um, that's where I'm going. When we had our first meeting, notices were sent out.
Yes, ma'am.
And then it was sent to the city council.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the city council brought it back to us. So it, there was a notification and after that, it's kind of up to the residents to keep track of where it is. And, uh, we're not doing anything now but considering what was originally considered at our, our previous meeting last month.
Yeah. And that's, that's fine. I understand that there's a certain obligation on each party's, you know, that we all have our responsibilities, but it just seemed to me though, the, the comment from the council person over there was that we were, and my husband's comment at the meeting too, was just please let us know what time. And I thought I had gone to the website and I, I had a hard time figuring out when it was. So actually, my husband just happened upon the developer. He sent us the, the, like, an email to let us know and I confirmed it today with Allison, but, um-
On the city website, all, there's a listing for all boards and commissions?
Yeah.
And it, and it, there's, they also, you click on there and it tells you when and where the meetings are?
Yeah. And I was specifically looking for this, like a work session or a workshop.
Well, the agenda is posted there.
Yes, ma'am.
Which included the workshop.
Okay.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but we're not taking any action on this tonight. We're just listening to arguments. There will be a vote at a later date if we're going to pass it on to council.
Yeah. And I'll make sure, you know, I, I called my neighbor to make sure that they knew when it was.
We can make sure everybody knows that they can come and make their comments prior to a vote.
Yeah. It might have just been nice if somebody had mentioned it at the city council meeting, how we could follow up, how we could figure out what time, what exactly we're looking for. Um, you know, they said work session and I'm in government employment, but I wasn't exactly sure what that meant. Um, is this, uh, going to be a work session at a, at a public meeting or a, a private time outside of this? Is this going to be a work session at a, at a public meeting, or a private time outside of this? I'm not as familiar with planning and zoning, because I don't work in that particular department, but.
Well, this, this is the agenda that was posted on that website, which lists the work session.
Yeah. And if I had known that I was looking for, for sure, a planning and zoning meeting, that it was going to be posted on that agenda, if I knew a couple of extra things, I would have known where to go.
Because I'm, we're all about hearing from y'all, always on every issue. So, to remedy the situation where we do take a vote, it's imperative that everyone be notified.
Or just that if we're going to say, hey, we're taking this back to a work session, that you let us know how we, like, what it's going to look like, how to find the information.
Right. So, Jennifer, when will that, how will that be handled?
So, the, this item will have to be re-notified, so every letters will be get sent out before this comes back for a vote and reposted in the paper.
Thank you.
So, we'll go through the full notification process again before this comes back to P and Z and city council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commission members?
So, just to summarize everything real quick, we have, we have a withdraw. They're going to resubmit for the CMU. Is it likely that that will be done in time for July's meeting? Or is it likely that that will be August meeting?
It'll be July's meeting.
July's meeting. So, it's, so it's likely they'll get on their paperwork. It's likely we'll revisit that for action come July. And if not July, then August, we meet the last Thursday of each month.
At six o'clock.
At six o'clock. Not, not six thirty.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
So, yes, letters, letters will go out, and the notice will go on the paper. I think we have to send it out next week, actually, so.
Yes.
Okay.
We have one other person that wishes to speak, Mary Ellen Orpukel.
Thank you. I actually wasn't going to speak, but I just wanted to confirm that it was said at city council that for the workshop, residents would be notified of the time and date of the workshop, so that they could be heard in what, in this conversation, rather than just in the vote. And I went over and spoke to Deborah to confirm my, my memory on that. And she says that, yes, that was included in the city council meeting.
Thank you.
So, that's all.
City boo-boo. But we're not taking action tonight.
Okay.
But just for, just for.
It, I think it's good to note that, because this needs to be, any chances of any, this happening again, needs to be corrected.
It was about, it was about having the people who would be directly impacted, and here's, that they could say, here's what we want, here's what we need. This is great, this is not great. You know, and one other thing that I, that I, that I was thinking when I was, y'all were talking is that, as you said at the last planning meeting about this, that this is going to be a permanent change. So, while we've been thinking about it as a C, you know, how's it going to be as a C one all the way, have you, we need to consider what CMU is going to do to that as well. Not that it's going to be a bad thing, but just needs to be considered, because none of us have been considering that, because that wasn't a consideration.
I'll, I'll say what I said last meeting, and that's that, that at some point, that, that corner will be developed. It's, it's going to be commercial, and so it's just a matter of, of what it is.
Absolutely.
And so, I, I, I think.
But it's a new code, and the first challenge, you're going to say.
Abs, absolutely. Which is why I think, why I think it will be important for us to continue the form-based out that way instead of. And you were, I believe, I think it was you at the public meeting for the subdivision that talked about, you know, how we've spent a lot of time and money figuring out what the form-based code is going to be, and then to change it the first time somebody doesn't like it.
Right.
And so, that resonated, and we agree. So, I think the fact that, that QuickTrip is able, is it QuickTrip?
Yeah.
Okay. Is able to make this work with CMU is, is going to be good for everybody, so.
But I hope that you'll still hear the residents.
It'll be posted for another public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add to that, because I do remember there was a concern about it being a gas station. It wasn't, the, from, comments from the citizens, or from the community, from the people that were there, it wasn't about the CMU and the C one. For them, it was about what was being placed on that corner. I do remember those comments.
But as long as what is going there meets the code and meets requirements, we can't say, we don't like your business, we want your business. We can't do that.
So, where we kind of go back to on that is this corner, when I actually looked it up earlier today, because we had a, a comment from, in the letter from the owner that owns the first three lots. On this corner, we looked, went back and looked at the nineteen ninety-one zoning map. And this corner has been zoned as a commercial corner since that nineteen ninety-one zoning map. That's the first picture map we had in our office.
It makes sense that it would be commercial forever, because of where it's located, Ninety-five and Chestnut, but.
And then that comes down to our use charts on the uses that have been allowed in that zoning code, that, that a fuel station is allowed within all three of these. So, it's, it's allowed to use if we didn't want a gas station there, it would have to change the underlying, like, the whole zoning code in general, so.
I'm going to shameless plug for everybody at home, everybody here, and everybody in the future. We're working on subdivisions, and we've already talked about how, like, in the next twelve to eighteen months, we'll start working on zoning. This is why it's so important that we get that input from everybody, because once the rules are written, those are the rules, and we can't pick and choose, you know, for the most part, you know, we want this here, we don't want that there. That's got to be decided when we revamp zoning, which will probably be our next task. Right now, we're looking at subdivisions, and, you know, we're trying to get that right, because once those subdivision ordinances are passed, they, as long as they meet the rules, it is what it is. We have no authority to deny that. So, that's one of the big reasons that input from everybody is so important, so.
We're having so much fun with subdivision, next we're going to look at zoning.
And zoning is a different, different thing.
And they're going to get science.
It's, it's.
I just have, I just have one more question on this.
Go ahead.
Well, it's really more about the overall process, because we've obviously got an applicant here that is now two months, you know, spent in this process, coming for boards, just to find out that, I mean, a fair number of people kind of agree on what's going on anyway, that, you know, commercial mixed use is actually sufficient to cover their needs. And, you know, in my opinion, rezoning this whole area to commercial mixed use is a much easier ask than rezoning it to C one. So, at some point, in determining the code, reading the code, and applying the code, we really dropped the ball somewhere. Because at one point, the commercial mixed use was no good, and only C one was going to work out. But now we realize that commercial mixed use is fine. And I know you guys kind of said it's the first time going through it, we're reading it, it's never really been challenged in many ways. You had street fringes that were possibly miscalculated or misassigned. But it just, for future going forward, we just, we got to know what we're looking at in the code and understand it, because, you know, we're, we're wasting time and money with these meetings.
I'm the first person to say that making laws, making rules, making ordinances ain't perfect, and it sure ain't pretty. And it takes a long time, and nobody's perfect. And I do apologize that the notices were not sent out if it was said at the council meeting that they would be. But for the shorthanded staff, I'd say this, it wasn't perfect, it's the first time you looked at it, and we'll do better in the future. So, Jennifer, thank you. All righty.
I just have one question, just, just so that I can understand. So, as, as, if it's a CMU, and if you can go back to that slide that shows what is all considered for under a CMU, no, what type of businesses, yeah. So, so there was a time where, right here where the Popeyes is, there was somebody wanting to put a liquor store there. And I was attending the church right behind that, and we fought that. And so, help me understand how that's different from this.
So, alcohol sales is actually in a different part of our code that's not part of our zoning. It's actually part of, it, it has to do with our business code, business regulations, and with state law, the Texas Alcohol and Beverage Commission. And there's certain requirements that have to be met in those cases, that to do alcohol sales within three hundred feet of a church, or three hundred feet of a school, door-to-door, it's door-to-door of a church, and it's property line to property line of a school, you have to get a variance from the city in order to have alcohol sales. So, it's not a zoning process, it's an actual separate alcohol variance process.
So, so if I were to be living on that corner, and I was just adamantly against this gas station going in, you're saying, if as long as they meet the code, there's, I can come stomp my feet all I want, but they're meeting the code.
In the case of zoning, zoning is an entitlement that a landowner has. And one, and if you try to remove some of those uses, or take that zoning to a lesser, less intense zoning without their permission, you, the city could potentially be open to lawsuits, because you're taking away something that they were already entitled to do. So, in this case, they have been entitled to do a fuel sales at this corner since nineteen ninety-five, which I believe was when our zoning code was adopted. Those, those uses have been in there since nineteen ninety-five. So, there's been that reasonable expectation that that landowner could put a gas station in at this, this location that entire time.
Okay.
And actually, that they, that entire, that was kind of a question that got brought up, was, well, how did they? And, and they would have received their own notices when the form-based code was implemented, but their, their entire tract was zone C two prior to two thousand and fifteen, so. And they would have had their own opportunities to come in and talk about the form-based code. So, that was on them. But they, but the use still was allowed on both of those zoning districts.
May I answer your question, Sheriff? Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, thank, thank you for coming. Thank you for participating, and thank you, Jennifer. We'll close the workshop session.
No, no, one more, one more. We'll keep going.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Gotcha, got me. Updating discussion on the draft subdivision ordinance. I was thinking we're going back in regular session for that. Jennifer, go.
So, just an update on where we are in the subdivision ordinance process. The planning department held a series of meetings on June thirteenth and fourteenth with various stakeholder groups. We had a specific meeting with, that we invited utility providers in the area, because we do have a number of different, we have Aqua, Bluebonnet, BP and L, different, different utility providers that are in our subdivision authority area. So, we met with them on the thirteenth. We had an, a public meeting on the thirteenth at six P M. for the public at large to come and express their thoughts and concerns. On the fourteenth, we had a meeting with developers and home builders. That was fairly well-attended and had a lot of good feedback. And then specifically with engineers and surveyors. And it's interesting how you get, you definitely get different points of view from each one of these groups. Total attendance, we had about, about fifty people over across all four meetings that attended. And we've been continuing to receive feedback online, or through our email and in person. People have dropped off marked-up copies, and we're reviewing all of those. So, and talking with Dave, who is on the beach right now, we're looking through some of the concerns we heard.
That we now hate him, right?
I know. So, some of the concerns that we heard at the meetings and through some of the comments, and we kind of listed some of the top, the kind of top six that we've heard repeating, and that we think are probably ones that need further review and thought from y'all. So, one of them is the threshold for requiring an alley. Currently, as written, it is any foot, any lot that is less than sixty feet wide would require alley access. Builders and home builders were especially not super thrilled with that. So, question is, should that threshold be less? So, would it be appropriate of, under a fifty-foot lot or forty-five-foot lot? What, and the idea on that is, is that once you start to get those lots really narrow, you have too many driveways onto one street, and you need to really probably put those alleys, those driveways in a separate access that are not on the primary street. So, that's one thing that we wanted you to look at, think about.
But just while we're on that one, is, is there a specific concern other than it lowers the available land to develop for profit? Is there, is there, is there a, is there a concern, like, hey, it's, it makes it hard to organize a subdivision? Does it make it harder to put roads in?
Some of the comments I've heard is it, it, infrastructure cost, infrastructure layout. When you, I get, what I have heard from various engineers and developers, once you start the alley kind of configuration, that's where all of your utilities end up running, is in the alley, not in the front street. And so, it, someone quoted the number, it drives up costs twenty percent. So, that's the feedback we've heard. It, but it also has to do with how that, how that neighborhood's going to look and operate from a pedestrian standpoint as well, so.
Do they have a number that they like, other than, not at all?
I haven't heard, I haven't heard a number from anyone, so that's just kind of.
So, they don't like the sixty, but we don't, there's no, like, we don't like sixty, but we're good with this. There's, it's just we don't like sixty.
I haven't heard any, heard anyone propose anything yet. But that may be coming, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Spacing of streetlights at mid-block. So, as, that, that's one that I know Richard and Dave have talked about and try, kind of bantered back and forth, is we have this kind of trade-off between safety with providing enough lighting in the neighborhood, and our dark sky ordinance, that we don't want to provide too much ambient light that blocks out the night sky. So, at minimum, we really should require lights at intersections and curves for safety. Then, and then the question then becomes, what, after that, should be the distance between streetlights on a public street? For public safety, you usually see two hundred feet. But then you're just going to get that, a lot more lights and a lot more ambient light, so.
So, is the concern that there's too much light?
That's one, yeah, that's the concern, is there would be too much light at two hundred feet. And then there's the concern of, at, just at every intersection curve, you are going to have potentially dark spots between, if you're, if someone's walking.
And the concern for too much light came from?
The developers or the city?
The developers, the public.
Mostly, mostly one of your fellow members. But in general, but we, along with the feedback on, you under the bus, didn't you? But on the, on, we've had this ongoing discussion on that signs produce a lot of light, well, streetlights produce a lot of light as well. So, if we're, if we want to continue to that dark sky, you have rural feel development. You know, we probably want to consider, maybe look at some examples of that street.
Yeah. And then the point I wanted to bring up with this, and it's kind of why I got on this, is, is do we want it to look like a lit-up parking lot with the light all the time? Or do we want to keep that rural, yeah, you've got lights in these areas, but it's not a lot of light? It goes back to our dark, dark sky ordinance. It's, where is that happy medium in the middle? You want to see two hundred feet, lights every two hundred feet go right through Austin, it's all the time down there. And it's, it just doesn't feel good. And, and I'd like to say there were some nice standards. I went looking to see if there was any standards on this. There's nothing out there. It's kind of, every city's got their own idea.
I will say, from previous discussions of the way the city is laid out, there's been a lot of discussion about the lighting south of the tracks and north of the tracks in the city. And generally, it's assumed, or agreed upon, that there's plenty of lighting south of the tracks, and not enough north of the tracks. That being said, I would be very surprised if south of the tracks, the lighting was every two hundred feet. I mean, it seems like it's every four hundred feet.
And that's something we can look at, is what our current spacing is.
I mean, south of the tracks, in this kind of area, right here, just north of the west of where we are, the lighting, who we've always talked about in city discussions, whether it's true or not, as being sufficient, or maybe just better than it is north of the tracks, still isn't at two hundred feet per. I mean, it's unofficial, of course, but I'd like to hear what that number is, because.
Yeah, I think this is one of the areas that we still need to do a lot of research, looking into it. In the long term, what's going to be the right answer for it? There's not a clear-cut answer out there today.
Okay. So, so number three is the maximum cul-de-sac length of two hundred feet, with a maximum of twenty lots on each cul-de-sac.
Concern?
Concern what? Concern that it's, it's fairly short compared to developers. I mean, th, these are developer, home builders, they were, they were two of our main, and engineers are stakeholders.
I was just trying to make sure we cite, like, this is the concern, and it came from these different groups, because I think it, I think it matters, so.
And looking at, like, what's being built right now, we're seeing, you know, six hundred feet long cul-de-sacs, and, you know, that's, so, two hundred is quite a bit shorter than that, so. Also, maximum number of homes without a second access. Currently, our draft is at twenty. Fire code, the minimum is thirty, so.
So, they want more homes without second access?
Yeah. The fire code requires a second means of egress at, when it goes over thirty. We're requiring twenty, a lower standard.
When you say fire code, are we talking NFPA, or are we talking, like, the current city?
The current, the, the, the National Fire.
National.
Yeah, and the, these are the, yeah, international building standards, yeah, fire code standards. And then the maintenance bond requirements. The, we did hear during, I think, the engineering and home building section, that they, they thought that was a little high for this area, that other cities around here don't require a hundred percent for two years, and that.
This area being Bash Shop, or this area being Central Texas, Austin, MSA?
Mm-hmm. And it's, and it is all over the place in this area. I've, I see one year for twenty-five percent. There are, there is at least one city with two years for two hundred percent. So, and the argument against that is that it's, it's likely that not a hundred percent of the infrastructure would fail. But on the other hand, if that subdivision included a bridge or some really large, you know, structure, it may.
We also don't have the financial wherewithal to.
Yes, so those are.
The size we are to absorb a big failure either, so.
That's right. So, that's just kind of something to think, to think on, that will probably come up in when we start to do public hearings. And then also the traffic impact analysis, which is written as a hu, a hundred cars at peak hour or a thousand average daily trips. Currently, our code just requires a, a TIA at two thousand average daily trips. So, this would lower that threshold. One of the main discussions revolved around it, if TIA's are really all that effective. And I know there's been talk in the past about trying to do kind of a, an ongoing city model where you, where you'd be able to plug developments in, but currently, we don't have that, that capability internally with staff to, to develop. But currently, we don't have that, that capability internally with staff to, to develop and maintain that kind of model too.
It would want to raise the threshold?
Yeah, potentially, or not have to do.
So, TIA's aren't the most effective, but the, the best that we got?
They're the best, the best tool we have today. Or the other suggestion was to do a fee-in lieu, but that would require a lot more study and discussion.
Explain what that is, please?
Hmm? A fee-in lieu, instead of doing a traffic impact analysis, the city develops a fee that every unit you bring in, you have to pay a fee. And then that would go towards any future system upgrades.
System being?
The traffic system.
System being specific to streets and infrastructure around that additional traffic?
Yeah.
But I think a TIA is a little more important than a fee because a TIA tells you so much more.
So, the, yes, a TIA analyzes the current traffic demands in the area and then what the future demands will be as that development builds out. So, it informs where, you know, potential intersections need to be upgraded or additional lanes need to be added. Where the argument against TIA's comes in is that if you've got a lot of large developments going on at the same time, they're all kind of doing their, their TIA's in isolation a little bit. So, if, that, that's the arguments. But from our staff perspective, we don't have the capability to do, we don't have anyone in-house that would do that for us.
I'm curious, Jennifer, this is one thing that Wesley was pushing pretty hard for, correct? These internal models that people could plug into and.
Yeah.
So, right now, I know we're very short-staffed in many ways, but, I mean, is there any possibility in the future of, like near future of having that capability?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I think definitely there is potential in the future, near future, depends on what you're.
But nothing we can rely on now?
Nothing we can rely on today. So, if we're updating this in, you know, two, three, four months, we would need to keep this requirement in. And we can always amend that as we develop a model in the future.
The, the concept of the fee being paid and it goes into a pool for future upgrades, what kind of burden does that put on the city for something like that?
I, I would, I honestly haven't done a lot of research into doing that. I haven't, usually I leave that to the engineering side of the world. So, I'd, I'd have to get back to you on how that would actually set up.
Is it something that's commonly used or something that's rarely used?
It's, I think it's one of the, I think it's a new, a newer thing. I think in other parts of the state and other parts of the country is used in this area. I think it's been typically more TIA-focused. But I think the trend is going to a traffic impact fee instead of a traffic impact analysis.
Okay.
And so, any other, we're continuing to receive feedback. We've received actually a lot of very specific technical feedback from several different, from a, a traffic engineer, from some utilities. So, we're compiling all of that and going through those comments and getting back with people. So, any other concerns that you guys have heard that you have with this process?
Actually, yes. I, I found the most productive part of us working with this issue was after the three hearings. Because we were seated in the back and as people straggled past, as they stopped and started providing input. And one question which just stopped me in my tracks was what is the city's or has the city done a 20-year cost impact analysis for maintaining the parks and the alleys? And particularly since we're pushing for alleys, that certainly is going to have an impact. So, that's something we need to consider. Also, I know that some of the cities are, are requiring HOAs for every development. So that they can, and so I'm not sure that we've dealt with that. There are a number, in fact, Richard and I discussed how much we don't know. Has anyone on the commission read all 151 pages? Okay. Are you comfortably confident that you understand 151 pages?
And considering that my day job is reading federal and international regulations and interpreting them, uh, no. There's, we have a lot in here. I mean, David's covered a lot of material, a lot of ground. I think we need to keep digesting it. I think in many cases, we understand parts of it, there's other parts of it. I'll say our eyes just kind of glance and going, well, I guess so. I think we need to understand it more. I'd like to see us, as the P and Z, spend a lot more time in the next month, like possibly maybe every week, going through the changes that are coming in and looking and seeing into what's there. I mean, there, there's a couple items up there, you know, whether it's lights, whether it's, it's when do we trigger alleys? What's the best thing that's coming in there? We're going to keep getting comments and builders and developers, guys, you're the ones who live closest to this anybody. We need to get this right. And we also don't want to keep pushing this thing off. Personally, I think the, the section that has to do with the infrastructures, that's the area we have to get right. Because if we don't, once it's built, it's there. We can't live with it. If it's an administrative or a process, you know, where's the trigger point? We can change that if we don't get it right. But the infrastructure ones, we've got to get it right. And I would much rather, you know, just spend the time if we have to over the next month, spend a lot more time going through this and picking through it. And I know staff is short, which means probably the commission, we're going to have to pull out some more time and spend digging into it, possibly even doing some research on our own to bring to it. And maybe have some more hearings or bring in some of the content experts to say, we've got a question about this. What is the best technical solution that exists out there?
I know, I personally have had concerns about the snout house issue. Because I saw what it actually did in Austin, which was basically the street after 5 o'clock was wall-to-wall vehicles because no one was pulling around to the back. Or the garages were full of junk in the back, like most of us have our garages kind of full. Or mom comes home after picking up the kids and she's not going to drive down the alley and pull into her garage in order to get them in the house and feed them and put on their uniforms and get them back out or run in and grab something. So, instead of solving a problem, it was, it created really a horrific problem where it was just bumper-to-bumper vehicles. And someone after the hearing pointed out a, a local city that had experienced enormous growth, out-of-control growth, and how they had dealt with it and they provided several options. So, I'd like to see us dig in some more and, and.
So, what are you, are you proposing that we start from, from page one and go through it again? Or are you proposing that the areas of concern be looked into further? What's the, the process that you'd like to see us enter into?
I, I think the area that we need to concentrate on, which deals with the infrastructure is, is section 10 dot 36 to the end. That's the area where we're getting into a lot of the details of how do we design the neighborhoods? What do we, where do we put the alleys? Where do we put the lights? What kind of construction, what type of easement? That's in all of that section. I think that's where we need to make sure we get it right.
Another issue I'd like to bring up then is, I still don't think we're quite in consensus or maybe, I know we've increased to 400 square foot or 20% on the replating, but I do still think the replating is an issue that really needs to be discussed.
So, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say this. I think there's a slight underestimation on your side of, of the amount of time that everybody spends outside of just our meetings. I think we all take this very seriously. I can, I've spent more time on my own time going through this stuff than we, than the almost 20 hours since November that we've spent just discussing this one topic. And just as a reminder for everybody, we could legislate and write ordinance to regulate every single itty-bitty thing. We could have a 2,000-page subdivision ordinance like Austin does. At the end of the day, no matter what we do, developers are going to come and build period, Bastrop. People want to get, as somebody who does real estate every day, people are wanting off 35 corridor, they're going to come this way. The problem is, is that what are the price points going to be? Making some of these changes are not going to deter developers. It's just going to raise the price of the product that they bring to the area and then therefore price out people that are already here. So, some of these things are great to legislate and, and write and be real specific about. Some of them, we're going to kind of just have to give a little bit and understand. And hopefully the public will understand it's not giving into a developer what they want. It's that balancing act of, you know, is the, is the entry level price of a home in the city of Bastrop 350,000? Or is it 250,000? Is it, you know, is it, hey, me and my, you know, me and my family of four can, you know, work two jobs and still afford to do this? Or are we having to move to Smithville or Fayette County or something like that? So, it's a consideration as we go through and talk about all this stuff. So, I, I think that instead of going through a big chunk of this forward, I think we've been going through the parts that have changed. We've had meetings, we said, these are issues. Staff has gone back and spent their time and dealt with subject matter experts and came back and said, these are the changes. We say we like these, these, and these, these ones we still have issues with and we've kind of been narrowing these down. I can't speak for everybody, but I don't think any of us are going to be subject matter experts on any of the technical stuff. It would be silly for me to try and be a technical expert on something that I'm not. So, at some point, we're going to have to rely on the staff and their interactions with the subject matter experts informing this. The city hired David, put a lot of trust in him. He has a lot of experience, his credentials are, you know, on point. And so, a lot of this has come from him and, and we've pushed back on him in certain areas that we didn't like and he was okay with that. And so, I, I think we're, I think we're down the home stretch. I don't know if hitting the brakes is quite what we need to do, but we can certainly look at some other things if we need to. But I don't, I don't know if hitting the brakes is kind of where we want to be, especially since we have people that are knocking down the city's door, trying to get in. And if they get in before this new one is in, it doesn't really matter, so.
Actually, to add on to your point, I don't think we want to slow it down. I think we want to be in a position where by next month's P and Z meeting, we're comfortable with that so we can say, yes, we want to move this forward. Let me say now, I think we need to make sure that we, we get all the pieces in there. I know one of David's comment was, he thinks this is documents 50 pages too long. No, yeah, and there's probably some ways we can trim it, but, you know, you just play with that. But you also made a very good point. What's the cost to builder to come in here? If we're making it difficult and they've got to jump through a lot of hoops to meet certain requirements and we tell them, you've got to do this, this, and this, it's going to jack up their cost. Can we just tell them, here's the end result we want and let them figure out how to get there? So, it gives them more flexibility so they can control their cost. And maybe then that we can help keep our price point down. So, there, there's some options out there and I would just like to make sure we get all of those covered. We end up with something that the developers like and something that works long-term for Bastrop.
Once again, I would ask, how do you propose that we proceed? If you have questions about certain areas, how do you propose that we proceed?
So, I will propose that we try to put together, I realize the timeline, one additional public input meeting. Whether it's two weeks from now and, and two weeks before our next, but it's, it's one more chance for the public to, to come in, get a review if they weren't able to make the first one, if they weren't able to make these meetings. And, and, and I think at that point, we've had two public meetings. We've had nine, nine P and C meetings where, where it's been on the agenda. And, and I think that's, at the end of the day, we're not going to make everybody happy. That's just the way it is. We can only do the most good for the most people and bounce the, the interest of the city in doing that. So, I think, I would propose one more public meeting between now and our next P and Z meeting.
I, I don't know, excuse me, I don't know that another public input would be as beneficial as if we have another P and Z meeting and have some presentation and have some decisions made by this group. Because like you say, we're not going to make everybody happy. We're not going to make all the developers happy, we're not going to make all the residents happy. We've got to bite the bullet and go forward. It's not going to be perfect, for sure. Do we want to possibly look at some areas of concern that we want to do some more work on? Have another meeting between now and the next P and Z meeting? I mean, I don't think we want to start at page one and go forward again, do we?
No.
I would shoot myself for whoever would propose that.
Let me just propose maybe a happy medium. How about we have another public input and then we have a workshop? So, we can take whatever we hear. Because I think we have a lot of questions ourselves that we need to discuss. So, two meetings, public input and us, that's, you know, this is critical that we get this right. So, I think it's worth the time and effort to do it right.
I'll, I'll be honest, I have less questions and more answers, which sounds weird, but it's, but, but I have less questions because we spend a lot of time with this. What I have are answers when you're like, hey, maximum number of homes without a second access, current draft is 20, NFPA says 30. It makes no sense that we would be more restrictive than the National Fire Protection Agency. So, that's a concern, I have an answer. I think 30 is okay with that one. You know, everybody has an opinion, boom, we're done with that. And, and we move on down the list of these things that are concerns. So, so I, I think it's, it's, for me at least, it's, I have, it's not questions I have, it's you have concerns. Let's talk about the concerns and generate answers to those, because we could sit here and question.
So, we do have one other person that would like to, to speak. So, why don't we cut your breath and Ronnie Moore, why don't you come up and tell us what you have on your mind?
My name is Ronnie Moore. I'm a civil engineer, live over in Elgin, grew up there. Was your Bastrop County engineer during the fire and dealt with FEMA and gutting all the debris moved out. Also, prior to that, I worked with Sabine Investment Company, some of y'all may be familiar with. It was subsidiary of Temple Island. We developed Hunter's Crossing where the Home Depot and the Chili's are, the Colony. I designed the first six sections of the Colony and then helped form the municipal utility districts there for the Colony. So, I've been around land development a lot. And also, so one of the things, and by the way, some of the stuff I say, you may already be doing. So, I certainly mean nothing but respect for you guys. I'm not trying to tell you how you should do something, maybe just a few suggestions. One of the things I would suggest is to always be aware of the cliche, the unintended consequences of what happens. Because, and, and I'll, let me give you a good example. When I was at Sabine Investment Company, I think we did the first planned development district. I think Hunter's Crossing was the first. And so, we were in negotiations with Jeff Holberg and going back and forth, back and forth. And one of the things I wanted to do, we were talking to, let's see, I believe it was Lennar back then. And one of the things I wanted to do is, I like old houses. I live in a house that was built in 1907. I like, I like the old, what I call the old Bastrop look. When people, my aunt from Kentucky was down here, I brought her over to Bastrop and just drove around through all the old houses so she could see that. But I know we can't replicate that like in Hunter's Crossing. But here's, I did this, I talked to Lennar, I said, look, we'd like to get you to put on the horizontal lap siding instead of the four-by-eight sheets. That was, that was a deal killer. I couldn't believe it. Just that alone, they said, if you do that, we'll walk. Because their, their cost and, and that particular product, their costs are so finely tuned that if you start bumping stuff up, then you're knocking out the, the bottom 10% of their market. So, the, the pie chart goes from here to here. And what, what happens, it's, you got to be careful about, let's say, old cliche, death by a thousand cuts. Because the maintenance bond, two years at 100%. Okay, that by itself is not a big financial deal, but it is an expense that I would sit and wonder, okay, what's the reasoning behind that? What, I mean, a maintenance bond is designed to protect you from poor quality work or things like that. But I've never seen any project that 100% of it went bad, you know? And so, just little things, while that by itself's not a big deal, when you start stacking things like that on top of one another, it does become a, a big deal, especially for, I don't know what the correct term people use now, but I, I like to call it workforce housing. Because you got to be careful that you don't price your own city employees out of housing where they have nowhere to live. It's like, yeah, you can come work here in Bastrop, you can come visit us, but you can't live here because you, you can't afford to. And, you know, that's always the challenge is how do you, like, you don't want to control growth, but you do want to shape it. And you, you, you want your city to have a certain look about it. And I love Bastrop. And, I mean, I've been in Elgin since the third grade. And so, Grant grew up all through there. And Elgin went through something, it was probably 10 years ago, maybe more, where someone decided they really wanted to have some housing more like, like I designed the arbors at Dogwood Creek, if y'all are familiar with that. And that, so that's way outside the city of Elgin, but city of Elgin people loved it. And they were, they, one day, somebody decided, we would like to have more housing like the arbors at Dogwood Creek. So, we need to change our subdivision ordinance. And they did. They went in and they dictated the minimum roof pitch and made it steeper. They went in and they dictated the minimum roof pitch and made it steeper. You had to have a nine-foot plate height, you had to be a hundred percent masonry, and they wouldn't count hardy as a masonry product. And I was telling them, I said, guys, you, you don't get to control this, the market is what controls this. If you, just because you change it, that, that movie, if you build it, they'll come. I mean, that was a movie. If you change your ordinance, that doesn't mean that you're gonna get that product. What's gonna happen is you're gonna stop all growth. And Elgin's a different market than Bastrop. Elgin's more of a entry-level market where you guys over here, you've got the entry level, you've got the move-up, you've got the empty nesters, I mean, Bastrop's got all of that. And so that's one of the challenges y'all have in dealing with that. But what it did in Elgin, when Elgin did that, guess what, well, y'all know what happened, it stopped. There were no building permits for years. And then finally, they changed it back, and it came back. And so that's the thing, and, and so some of the things like the twenty lots on the subdivision you were talking about, that's, what you said was exactly what I was thinking. And, and you gotta be, in this alley-loaded homes, what happens is, when you, when you start doing that, you add a lot more linear footage of streets, and guess who maintains those? The city does. And if your property tax revenue doesn't go up because you don't get more density, then you've just jacked your street maintenance cost up without a corresponding increase in revenue to, to do that, to take care of the streets. So that's, again, one of those, can be one of those unintended consequences.
Excuse me, well, well, I would, everything you're saying is incredibly important and valuable and accurate. We do have a process where we limit presentations to three minutes.
So I got about another two minutes?
I gave you an extra one to begin with. Unless the commission members would like to, to suspend the rule and hear some more from Mr. Moore, or do we want to move on?
No, I, I'm finished. I just, and again, I'm just, just helpful suggestions.
I, I like to take advantage of the fact that you're here, though, I have a, I have a question for you. So the, the goal with, the goal with putting alleys in the back as we narrow lots is to avoid having a street full of projects, right? So in your opinion, what do you think is a happy medium? Where we don't have forty-foot lots with nothing but garages as you drive down the street? But we also don't have sixty-foot lots with alleys in the back?
Yeah, and one of the challenges is when you start to shrink lot widths down, uh, it's a real challenge engineering-wise, just to fit the curb inlets for drainage in there and the driveway cuts. I mean, it gets really, really tight. And then when you get people parking on the street and things, and so you, you gotta do something, you gotta widen the streets a little bit, or if you do alley-loading, but what, what, I like alley-loading myself, as long as you allow a corresponding increase in density so the developer can recoup the, because it costs more money. So if you require alley-loading on a, on a fifty-nine-foot lot, then you, they, they won't build it.
So what, what does a fifty lot look like? Is that more reasonable, in your opinion? I realize I've kind of put you on the spot, so I'm not trying to.
Yeah, I can't say specifically for, uh, Bastrop, but it probably would be less than that, less than a fifty for alley-loading, because usually alley, alley-loaded lots are more like a townhome or, uh, zero lot line kind of product of forty-foot, something like that. And, and all the builders have, they have products built for specific lot sizes. And so, and, so.
Stop!
Um, I like your comment about unintended consequences. I think that's kind of one of the, the concerns I have in this, especially in the area of, like I said, the infrastructure. It sounds good when we talk it here, but it's, when we put it in, does it come back and bite us later? And that's what I want to make sure we get right for this. Also, I don't, I, we need to stay on the timeline to try to get this out, because we've got people coming in, they want to build in Bastrop, we, we are getting this to them. But we just need to keep watching. I love your comments and observations. Come give us some more, please.
All right, and one other thing before I leave, uh, because my three minutes is almost up.
You've rocked the element for a while, haven't you?
On the street, paving, specifying a depth of base and things like that, that's really getting more into a construction-type spec, but my suggestion would be let a geotechnical engineer do that, because, for example, let me give you an example, in the colony, we had areas that were really bad expansive clay, and we would, we would need eighteen inches of base on that. And then we had areas that were thirty, down by nine-sixty-nine, that's thirty-foot of sand before you hit clay. And so down there, you could get by with, you know, eight inches of base or something, and have a better street than you had with the eighteen on the other. So, you know, just let a geotech handle it.
One quick question, um, so you were involved in the development of Hunter's Crossing. From your recollection, what is the average width of those lot fronts?
Those were, let's see, at that time, y'all's, the Bastrop's minimum lot width, I believe, was, um, seventy feet, I think. And we, so we came in and did a PDD, a plan development district, and part of that was that whole system of trails that's all through there, because, you know, as y'all know, the PDD, we're trading, doing horse trading, you know, you're giving us better dens, uh, higher densities for something in return. And what Sabine gave back in return were, um, all the landscaping down the main streets, the boulevard streets, um, all the trails that interconnect and leaving gaps between lot lines to connect a road to a trail that went to the park and, and all that kind of stuff. And then the lot, really, the, well, I'll just be perfectly frank with you, I told the developer, we shouldn't do this, because we're not getting enough reduction in lot sizes, but we did it anyway.
Because I, I guess my question goes to, we got a comment from a homeowner in, um, over there in, uh, what are we talking about?
Hunter's Crossing.
Hunter's Crossing, thank you. Where basically referring to the congestion that was there on the road, you know, basically saying there's, these lots aren't big enough, we need more parking space, there, you know, you've got multiple families living in some house in some cases, and, but just basically, you know, I'm thinking about the alley comment, where you yourself even said a sixty feet, you don't even know what to do. You know, at sixty feet.
No, at forty, when it gets down to any of the.
Yeah, no, forty feet, you can add a, you can add an alley, because you can recoup it because of the lot density, but at fifty feet or sixty feet, where it may not be enough for a developer to recoup it on an alley, to a homeowner, and again, this is one homeowner, but we've all driven through that neighborhood, it's like a parking lot out there. And those are sixty feet, maybe even seventy feet, maybe even wider. And so I guess my idea is that there's this area between fifty and seventy feet wattlet, watt lot width, that a developer doesn't want to put an alley in, but yet if you drive through these neighborhoods, it feels like that parking lot, you know? And so I guess with that product width right there, what is the ideal construction to not create a parking lot on the street, but yet not require a developer to put an alley in?
Well, and you gotta keep in mind, there's four parking spaces on that lot, two in the garage and two more in the driveway.
And the garage is probably full.
People choose not to, to use them, you know? And, um, so.
But that's human nature, which is gonna happen in any development.
But what would happen, you'd be better off, instead of trying to make the lot sizes bigger, what that does is reduce its density, which drives up costs. Developers sell lots by the front foot, so many dollars a front foot.
Yeah, absolutely, but I'm, I'm, my concern is like, at a fifty-foot width, we got, we're between a rock and a hard spot.
Well, actually, fifty in most places is a standard.
Or a sixty, then.
Standard lot size.
Where, I guess just, what's the ideal product there in your, in your mind, to not create congestion on the street, to not tell homeowners they can't store things in their garage, because they're all gonna do it, and to not make a developer put an alley in?
Well, if you do that.
I mean, it's just human nature that's never gonna work, no one's ever gonna agree.
No, it's just that, do, what, do we want to not let them, so many people park on the street, or do we want to drive the lot cost up so much that the home builders won't buy it? And that's, that's the challenge you have, is everything's a balancing act.
I completely agree, and so I'm trying to get out of you what works in that spot.
Fifty, if you get any, if you start demanding lots bigger than sixty feet, developers need a mixture of fifties and sixties at a minimum. And, and if it's a different kind of product, they, like a zero lot line, uh, like empty nesters, they don't want to be maintaining everything, they like to come in and, they, their market, they like to come in on a forty-foot lot, because they don't have to mow anything, they don't have a bunch of maintenance. Um, and then, but if you get beyond sixty, then it starts driving the cost up so much that the builders don't want them, because the builders, they don't even want to build that extra ten-foot of fence. I mean, that's how tight all their stuff is, and you see these nice, deep lots that get deep just because that's the way it, you, you cut it up, and builders don't want them, because the, you had, the fences are too long, you know? And everything's so price-driven, you, you would not, it's, it's amazing how price-driven everything is, to where little things, you can, you can knock the bottom out of that particular market, and, um, Bastrop has always had a challenge with that workforce housing, you know? And, and it's not just Bastrop, all cities do, you know? But, um, so there's a, there's a way to, but you, you don't want everything in the whole city to be forties, but you don't want everything in the whole city to be eighties or seventies. You want, you want different product mixes and different developments and, you know, and then you preserve the integrity of old Bastrop, but we're, we're not ever gonna be able to replicate that, because the market just won't support it. Now, well, it will in the colony, and Colavista and places like that, but we can't do that everywhere. And so just remember, it's always dollars per front foot to the developers and to the, uh, and side yard setbacks make a big deal. Elgin has seven-and-a-half-foot side yard setbacks, so for a fifty, for a two-story product, single story is five. Well, five is standard most places. And so in Elgin, what happens then, if you want a fifty-foot lot, you have to make them all fifty-fives, because you don't know where the builder's gonna build a two-story or a one-story. And so that drives the cost of that lot up to where developers shy away from that, just that extra five foot on each lot. So that's, again, that's another case of unintended consequences.
Thank you for your input, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Can I make a request that planning and development staff are gonna throw things at me, or can, can, is there a way, is it feasible, given everything else that you guys have going on, to take all the responses and all the comments that we've had and put them together in one nice, pretty, four-hundred-page PDF file and send those out?
We did send out the comments that we've got, that we, that we recorded from the primary meetings already, to you all, at least.
Okay, and, because I think I've only gotten, I think, two emails from stuff that's been sent in to y'all. I'm assuming you've gotten more than that?
We've gotten more, um, we, we can compile that and get, get you all copies.
Please don't, please don't throw things at me.
And we, and honestly, I expect there probably be more comments when we get to public hearings. Um, we've gotten some really good feedback from specific technical trades, but some of the public at large, I'm guessing we'll get more of those comments.
My thought is that it's gonna be more efficient for us moving forward to, for us to spend the time on our own, outside of meetings, outside of everything else, reviewing comments, so we aren't coming in and spending a whole lot of time reviewing comments, so we can look at the problems, look at the questions, and already have the background and, and go ahead and move forward and make some decisions and move forward. Ken, this is your question.
Joe Turner. I'm sorry, we have Mr. Turnus, who also has a lot of expertise, had submitted a, uh, request to speak, too. Give us your pedigree, sir.
Good evening, my name's Joe Turnus, and I'm one of those rare birds, I'm, I'm a traffic engineer. And so my interest today is to talk about the TIA's and that entire section. I would strongly suggest that you consider taking that whole section of the TIA and taking it out of your subdivision ordinance and put it into another ordinance that would go alongside and can be reviewed with, with your review of the traffic, of the subdivision ordinance. And I say that before, because most cities, most engineers, your TIA requirements are not in the, the subdivision ordinance, that's the last place you find it. I think we're probably the only city, we are the only city that I know of, that have the TIA requirements in the traffic control plan, I mean, in the subdivision. And the reason why is that you not only use it for development from, through the subdivision ordinance, but you also can use it for, through zoning, and you also can use it where you have a track that's already subdivided and is already zoned, and they're gonna put a development and lay it out, that has an impact that you're not catching the way it's set up right now. So I, I ask you to consider that. Second, I have some concerns about, um, the, the process. Y'all have done a fantastic job getting into this subdivision and the work that y'all have done, and the number of meetings and hearings and things like that. Most of those areas are fairly standard in subdivision ordinances, although there are some significant changes. What, what I'm concerned about is the changes that might be needed for the traffic impact analysis requirements. I have submitted last week a whole series of changes, some of them are just grammatical changes, some of them are significant changes, and I don't see a process by which I, and my comments can have some kind of an impact on this process. And so when you are looking at the processes that you're gonna go forward with, think in terms of this oddball section, the TIA, that so few people, uh, understand, yet everybody is concerned, I think. Every comments that I hear from people is traffic. And why is that traffic? I just don't think it's been handled correctly. I think there's, the existing, uh, sections is, really needs a rewrite, and I think what you're doing here is very valid, and I, I thank you for it, because I think it's gonna come out to be really good. But there are, there are some items within that section that if you're not a practicing traffic engineer, it'd just go over your head, and I don't mean it personally, I mean, in the review process. So I, I appreciate, uh, whatever you can do, I'd be happy to work with commissioners, with staff, with whoever would be the appropriate place, so that we can look at that, that traffic impact analysis section and have a really great one, because Bastrop needs it. And there's some unique things I think we can do because of the uniqueness of our city. So I, I thank you first of all for what you're doing, and I request the opportunity to work with whoever you think might be appropriate, and consider taking that section, putting it somewhere else so we can apply it to other issues that generate traffic in our district.
I can assure you that your comments will be considered. Jennifer's back there nodding her head also. And, um, we'll definitely publicize whatever additional meetings we have, and I'm asking Jennifer to, uh, talk to Dave Gaddis about, about your recommendations, so that there's some, some staff time put into it before we meet again. And we, I have, we have your phone number here, we'll know how to find you. Okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, do we want to have one more public meeting, and then one more, uh, special P and Z meeting before the next regular meeting? How do we want to approach this? We've had a lot of comments, uh, how do we want to approach it?
Well, um, I'd say at least as one, in two weeks from now, do another P and Z with it focused on looking at, as Patrick said, we've got a lot of answers, let's make sure we've got, the concerns have been raised, we've got answers in there that work for us, and focus it just on that, so that, with the intent being, when we get done, any questions there, we know we've got answers, we know we've got something that's gonna work.
It could be, once we get all of the questions that have been, concerns that have been raised, some of them may already be answered within what we're doing.
Yes.
So we might be able to just address those in pointing to the appropriate section.
Somebody said it earlier, which I don't know if this is possible or how we do this, but it may make sense to have a special meeting that is basically a, a, kind of what we did with Dave, we open a meeting, Dave can provide the intro to everybody, and then we can just turn it into a big workshop, and, and so we can, instead of having like a public information comment section, and then like another special meeting.
I would recommend that.
Kind of combining them together, and it just turned into one big education fest on subdivision stuff. Um, and then we can just talk about it and hang out. And then we can just talk about it and hang out and do that. So, that would, we'd probably get that and then whatever legal requirements we know we need for notification and whatnot, make sure those get met and then.
Actually, I'm reflecting on the previous speaker. I think the most productive part of everything he shared with us was the fact that there was dialogue from the commissioners to him, asking specific questions on what he thought about. To me, that was the most valuable piece that he imparted to his presentation. So, how do we get that? How do we get dialogue on this with people who are in the trenches?
Well, one of the things, and I mean this with the utmost respect, is that we have engineer, we have traffic, but we have one opinion from industry, it would be incumbent upon the staff to reach out to other people. And I mean, you can have two doctors treating the patient two different ways because that's just how they view it. We want to make sure that we're, we're allowing the staff to consult a variety of people from each section and not just whoever shows up to speak. I think that's, that's relevant. That's where we can provide our comments, but it's going to be incumbent on them, on their day to day to go and say, "Hey, we've consulted five, you know, engineers and five, you know, traffic folks and, you know, whatever, whatever, and this is the consensus that we've got from them based on your comments and concerns and stuff like that." So, that's my thought.
I'd like this, perhaps they happen at the, our next special meeting.
I think Patrick's right, but I think all engineer, I mean, I know Dave's had all these meetings with.
Can I finish what I was saying? I'm sorry. I'd like for our next regular meeting to begin with addressing the concerns that were addressed at the special meetings that we had for the stakeholders. And we have, Joe said he would be willing to work with us and Ronnie, I think, would too.
Yes.
And get some of their input and maybe they'll be there with us also. So, go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, sorry about that. I was just going to agree with Patrick that I think having people, you know, getting consensus, but I mean, Dave's had all these special interest meetings with groups, let them come to the next meeting. I mean, those are people we can ask questions directly to and get the information directly.
And we did collect names and emails from people who were willing to give us them at the meeting, so we can send an email out to that next meeting.
When do we want to set this meeting? Are you going to check the calendar and get back to us?
Yeah, let's do that.
I think we need to.
Not next week.
Keep this on track so that we can hit, hit the targets date of us getting it done by end of July so we can get it to city council for August.
Yep.
Okay. And we'll push any special meeting notices out to the main page of the website. I believe we can do that, so.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else? And we'll close the workshop. Item five, updates. Individual requests from planning and zoning commissioners at particular items be listed on future addenda. I think you've got that already. Anything else? Anything else? With that, item six, executive session. Item 6A, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to confer with city attorney regarding legal advice related to the status of updating the city's regulatory program, including public comment and citizen input into the new subdivision ordinance, pending revisions to zoning and sign codes, and uniformity of the permitting process. With that, we are adjourned into executive session. The Planning and Zoning Commission will now reconvene into regular session. I'd like to report that there was discussion, but no action on anything that had to do with the executive session. So, at this time, I would like to move to item number eight.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, we are now adjourned.